...of the town after the planning commission meeting for January the 20th, 2015. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Tonelli?
Here.
Commissioner Whitmer?
Here.
Chair Lively?
Here.
Commissioner Lane?
I'm with you here.
Sorry. Commissioner Grinley's excused.
Okay, we're gonna have a forum. Public comments, anyone in the audience who want to comment on anything that's not on our extensive agenda for the evening? Good.
You said that out loud.
December the 5th, 2014. Anybody have any additions or corrections in a minute?
I move the minutes as presented.
Second? If there's a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's our approval. Okay, moving right along, public hearings, which there are a bunch of them. Conditional use permit at 116 Atherton Avenue. Staff report, please.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow, in addition, to create an accessible master bedroom to the existing residence at 116 Atherton Avenue. The new master bedroom will be located on the driveway side of the property with an accessible ramp to provide ease for access for the residents, as well as in the event emergency responders need to get to the property. The required rear yard setback for the residence is 60 feet, and the applicant is requesting a 20-foot encroachment into that rear yard setback, resulting in a 40-foot rear yard. In reviewing this application, staff notes that the code does allow a 20% setback encroachment for second dwelling units. We have seen that applied in numerous situations in town, and it results in sufficient setback for privacy as well as landscape screening. So for this project, staff would recommend that the planning commission approve the reasonable accessibility request and issue the use permit, but that the requirement that the rear yard setback be at least 48 feet, so that would be consistent with that 20% encroachment. Be happy to try to answer any of your questions.
Questions, Lisa? Hold on. No questions there. We'll open the public hearing as the applicant here, or representative?
Mr. Chair and members of the planning commission, my name is Bill Wood with William Wood Architects. Get the mic up higher. There you go. We've worked diligently with staff on this project to try to take care of the Sue family. They have medical issues at this point, and I know that you're aware of some of the issues that I talked to Commissioner Lively on the phone about the issues, as well as staff. And I've talked to Mr. Sue about the request for the 20% allowance on the setback with meaning cutting back eight feet would keep it in context to their ordinance, and I have talked to him about that. And so as far as we're concerned, I think as far as what staff has recommended, we would be happy with that.
Very good.
All right.
Any questions of the applicant? If not, thank you very much.
Aye.
Anyone else desire to be heard on this item? Item 116 Atherton Avenue. If not, we'll close the public hearing. Comments from commissioners?
I'm comfortable with the proposal as modified by staff.
Mary Beth?
I am as well. I saw the property the last time it was coming to the force. It's happy to see that it's gonna be modified.
Yeah, I agree with Mary Beth. Happy to see the modification and have it brought before us again. And unlike some of the other items that are on the agenda tonight, this is a case where we have a existing structure with a true need, so I don't see any problem with what's proposed.
Very good. Okay, I can agree with what you said before. I saw the property in the previous application, and I agree with this solution. Maybe have a motion, please.
I'll move that the planning commission approved the conditional use permit at 116 Atherton Avenue for the reasons incorporated in the staff report and with the presentation of the statement.
I'll second the motion.
Wait. Does that...
With the modifications presented by staff.
Okay.
Right.
If we move to the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. The setback will be adjusted accordingly. If the applicant is dissatisfied with this decision tonight, you may appeal to the plans to the council through the city clerk within 10 days. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is 82 Elena, request for special structure permit to allow basement to extend beyond the footprint of the main residence. Staff report, please.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a special structure permit to allow the basement to extend beyond the first floor of the main residence at 82 Elena. The applicant proposes to construct a new two-story residence with a partial basement. A small portion of the basement is proposed to extend approximately four feet beyond the front elevation of the first floor, and the basement area extension will be under the front entry steps and encompasses approximately 36 square feet in area. The basement will not be visible from the front of the property. Staff recommends approval of the project as proposed. Be happy to try to answer any questions.
Any questions, staff? Lisa? Anyone? If not, we'll open the public hearing as the applicant here, or representative? Yes.
Good evening, commissioners. It's Steve Borlick with Young &amp; Borlick Architects, representing the property owners who are also here this evening. And as you see, this is a squared-off basement under a recessed entry feature. It's small, and we think it's in complete conformance with the intent of the ordinance to allow basements outside the first floor. I'd also note it's underneath the second floor of our mass, and the way I'm looking at this, it's permission to have a recessed entry feature in what otherwise on the home would be a straight wall. So we feel like it's a straightforward and minor special structure permit application. But I'm happy to answer any questions, and the property owners are also here this evening.
Any questions?
No.
Thanks.
We're doing very well. Now we're done. Did everybody need sticky bags?
No one else wants to be heard on this matter? We'll close the public hearing and bring it back here. Eric, we'll start with you this time.
All right, Eric. Yeah, you're talking to me this time? Okay, good. All right, good. I'm comfortable with the adjustment. It's an interesting interpretation, but I think it is accurate for this time. It's part of the design feature, and as long as it doesn't stick beyond the footprint of the basic house, I'm comfortable with it.
Mary Beth?
Yeah, I go by the residence. I looked at the plans, and I felt that the, you know, that the basement was being squared off, and I don't have any issue with that.
All, no comments? Good. I agree with the comments that have been made, as a minor adjustment. Is there a motion, please?
I'll move that the planning commission approved the special structures permit at 82 Elena Avenue, based on the findings and for the reasons enumerated in the staff report. Subject to the conditions listed in the draft, special structures permit to allow a basement outside the footprint of the first floor.
Second, please. Mary Beth, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion is approved. The special structure is approved. If you disagree with this decision tonight, you can appeal to the council by commenting the city clerk's opinion.
You need an extra pass? I was still guilty, Troy, he's away.
There's lots of papers. The next item on our agenda is a special structures permit at 255 Atherton Avenue, request for a special structures permit to allow basement to exceed beyond the footprint of the main residence. Staff report.
Thank you and good evening. The site is located at the corner of Atherton Avenue and Linda Vista Avenue. They are currently in construction for a two-story residence with a basement. The applicant would like to extend the basement beyond the footprint of the main building in two areas. The first is under a covered porch towards the rear of the house and an associated small area next to it where the chimney is located, and the second area is under a recessed entry on the left side. The total square footage of the basement beyond the footprint of the house is approximately 289 square feet, which is within the roofed area of the house. Town arborist Sally Bens noted that the project would not interfere with any heritage trees, and staff has not received any comments from neighbors on the project. So staff would recommend approval of the special structures permit as described in the staff report. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Any questions, staff?
It's a big dig right now.
It is.
Could be the world's biggest pool if we don't get it filled up before the rain comes.
Pretty big hole.
Yes, yeah, pretty big hole.
Okay, if there's no question of staff, we'll open the public hearing as the applicant here, or representative?
Yes. Commissioner, my name's John Daisy King. I'm with Pacific Peninsula Architecture, the applicant, and the property owner, Sadakarabi, is also here. This is a pretty straightforward matter, and staff has done a good job sort of outlining it. So I'm just here to answer any questions that you may have, and I just would reserve the right, in case there is someone who has some objection to it, that I could address those objections at that time if necessary.
Any questions?
I think the question I had, as I read this over and looked at things, was with an extension or beyond the footprint of nearly 300 square feet, and you're at 92%, the basement's at 92% of the total footprint. Just why you need the variance and why you need the extra 300 square feet and why this issue is here when you're dealing with a blank lot and you can do anything you want? I'm just wondering why.
Well, it's basically, it's filling in, well, there's two areas. One was a minor area, one's a larger area. It's basically, we have two porches above in the main corner where the main area is, or the area where the most encroachment occurs, and then we have the light well or courtyard outside of that. So in reality, what it's doing is we're basically bringing the room to the edge of where the porch area is, down at the lower level, which allows more light to come into the livable space. The way it would be built as is, is that we're gonna have to pull that wall in quite a bit with this overhang of the porch, resulting in a lot less daylight coming into the livable space of the basement. So it really, the difference between the wall, you know, at the edge of the porch versus back, you know, the 15 feet back, it makes a huge difference in terms of lighting of the basement, but it really, no one will ever see it. I mean, it's not, there is no discernible difference to the outside of the building. It also maybe simplifies a little bit of the structural issues with the building in terms of having a wall underneath the porch walls. So it simplifies that, makes, you know, a little bit better structure that way. I think that sort of answers the questions.
Mary Beth?
Well, my question was, why wasn't it proposed this way, you know, approved this way the first time?
We, so we did submit it, not, we didn't realize that we were gonna need the permit for the extent, for the area underneath the porch. So we went, what we did was we went ahead and made the change of the drawings, submitted for the building permits so the project could get underway, and then also at the same time applied to the commission, to the planning commission for the special structures permit to allow us to move that out. So it was a part of the original design, but we pulled it back.
I see, okay.
Yeah, no, I just wanna make sure we're not getting into a situation more and more where all we get is proposals that have bigger and bigger porch so that there's a bigger and bigger basement. So it's one of the, the one situation where the entry area, and that's more consistent with what we just approved. This one is a little bit extra, so we're kind of tiptoeing down a way to have bigger and bigger porches.
You have it right.
And bigger and bigger. Yeah, yeah.
Any further questions?
Okay, so I think there are two similarities into the porch is not projecting out beyond the mass of the residence, it's set into the residence. It's one corner, so in a sense of, in terms of what the ordinance allows, in terms of squaring off, the basement extension is in keeping with that. You know, we can talk about the size of the porch, but it's the same as, you know, a porch is a nice feature, it's not something where we're projecting, you know, using the porch to project beyond what the overall design and massing of the house is, we're actually pulling it in.
The V by the second floor?
Yeah, the first floor and the second floor. So rather than making that all solid wall there, we have the porch. So in the same vein as having a recessed entry is a nice feature, it gives you some flexibility to provide a little bit nicer variation of the architecture of the building for what is seen, without hurting you in terms of having to put your wall so far back that you get, you get the reduction in the light quality into the basement, which really doesn't, in this case, doesn't affect anybody other than the occupants.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you, John. Anyone else like to speak on this issue? If not, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back here. Mary Beth, we'll start with you this time.
I don't really have any issue with the square.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure, your final explanation there helped me on that, so I looked at it, and just long as we're not allowing porch be the reason that things get sent out.
Paul?
Yeah, I agree with Eric as far as the explanation. I think just in general, with this particular issue and others, we have to be careful as far as extending, extending, setting precedents. And this is one of the many cases that comes before us tonight that deals with a new residence or a new structure on a vacant lot where you have a clean slate, and the question, like I posed, is your building is brand new, and we have guidelines and restriction codes in town, and we're seeing more and more of this as far as build it within what the town requires. And that's one of the issues I have, not only of this, but a number of the items on the agenda tonight. So I'm not likely to approve it, just as a matter of not setting any precedence any further.
I've visited the site. I kind of agree with that, we're getting bigger and bigger, but I will vote to approve. Your motion to approve, Ben?
Yeah, I mean, I'll tell you, this is as close to the line as I get on this one, and it has to do with a whole series of requests we have for homes without overhang, overhang on the roof, and trying to call the wall the roof, and therefore there's another section just there, and there's a porch here, so this is, this is the creep that's going on right now in terms of the pushing the envelope in terms of the ordinance. So I'm okay with the way this is instructed, but I agree that, you know, it should have been taken into care the first time. So I'll move, I'll move that the planning commission approved the special structures permit at 255 Atherton Avenue, based on the findings and for the reasons enumerated in the staff report. Subject to the conditions listed in the draft, special structures permit to allow a basement outside the footprint of the first floor.
Your second. Mary Beth, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close?
No.
Three to one, the motion's carried. If you disagree with the verdict of our decision this evening, appeal to the council through the city clerk within 10 days. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is 97 Santiago, request to allow basement to exceed beyond the boundaries of the main residence. Your staff report, please.
Yes, thank you. The site is located on Santiago Avenue, just at the southern town limits. The applicant is proposing to extend the basement beyond the footprint of the main floor towards the front of the residence. This area of the proposed extension is approximately 197 square feet. It's about four feet wide across the front of the property, I mean, I'm sorry, across the front of the main residence. It would not be visible from the front. There are some landscape features between the house and the street. The town arborist has visited the site, would not interfere with any heritage trees. We have not received any comments on this project. So staff would recommend approval of the special structures permit for the reasons described in the staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions, Lisa? Anyone? If not, we'll open the public hearing as the applicant here, or representative? Yes. Miller, page.
Good evening, I'm Bob Swat, Swat Myers Architects, and I apologize for bringing this issue to you, because this looks like this is the third or fourth time tonight. But we are proposing to make a simple rectangle out of a basement, which extends the basement out beyond the front of the building above by about four feet. About, more than half of that is covered by very deep overhang, but not all of it is covered by that. There's a very deep overhang that covers most of it, cannot be seen from anywhere. Thank you. I do have some visual, if you would like to see them, but if you don't need them.
Any questions, Lisa? Paul?
Uh, no.
Mary Beth?
No.
If not, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, get along here, Steve. Okay, if there's no further questions, anyone else in the audience who want to be here on 97 Santiago? If not, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back here. Eric, we'll start with you.
Start with somebody else for this one. I'm gonna hear where this one goes, because, I mean, your sequencing is not to your benefit.
Okay, Mary Beth?
You know, I just, I can't see a whole lot of difference between this and the other squaring off basement, other basements, so I think, I don't think we have a whole lot of choice other than to agree with it.
No, I think we're seeing a lot of these tonight, and once we start to approve them, I think we're not stuck with them for long.
Yeah.
And we gotta find a way, we'll talk about that later in the press, but we gotta find a way to see where this is taken in the long term.
If I may, sorry. I understand that sometimes we have heavier agendas, sometimes less, but I think it's really important if you could just focus on each individual project, and if you need to, staff is really good to enumerate the findings that need to be made, and if you need to take it back to that and just look at each project as much as you can individually, I appreciate it.
Paul?
My comments mirror the previous case.
Yeah, that was a good example of taking the lead in the voice. All right. So I've got some questions of the staff, I guess, on this one. So I'm having, this one seems slightly different in terms of the footprint of a basement relative to the house, right? This one is beyond the house, and it's not really underneath anything that's functional above it, or is it, is it my understanding, do I have the wrong understanding of this one? Does this one seem different to me?
It is a little bit different than the previous application. So I think it is most visible on sheet A 2.3, I think is helpful to look at it.
Yeah.
So in that area, you can see the basement shown at the lower level, and then at the main level of the home, there's a very large overhang that projects over that proposed basement extension. And then to the right, it's kind of like a cantilever feature where the second story extends in that direction.
Okay.
So if you take those in combination, it is more squaring them off. So this is different than many of the applications that we may see where there's a recessed entry. This is not that case.
This is a recessed wall.
But it is, it is generally within that kind of squaring off, but it, since it's a contemporary building form, it is a little bit different.
So it's underneath the, what it looks like is a second-story deck of some kind, and it's within the footprint of that deck above?
Mostly, but, but not completely.
How far outside of the footprint of the deck is it? On my drawing, it doesn't show it outside the footprint, so that's what I'm asking.
Because it also projects in the other direction, and so if we're looking at that section, it's projecting kind of towards you underneath that awning overhang as well.
I got it, I got it. Okay, I got my answers to my questions. I don't know if they got my answers in my phone.
Anyone else have any further comment? If not, we have a motion, please. Someone? Mary Beth?
I have the mandate we agree on the special, special structures permit for 97 Santiago Avenue for the reasons enumerated in the staff report.
Move, Mary Beth, move. Is there a second, please?
I got a, kind of, one more question, staff, on that point. So how far beyond, is it four feet of beyond the, at the end of the overhang? Remember reading four feet.
The, the extension is to the front, and the depth of that is four feet, and so it's running parallel to that front line, do you know what I mean? Four feet wide towards the front. The majority of that is covered by the deep overhang.
Right.
Okay? And then at the extent of that is where that second-story cantilever is, kind of at the far right-hand side of the house.
So how far beyond the footprint of the, on the, on the side where it extends out, is it?
That side at corners off, that's where the light well is located.
Right.
So it's where the basement extends and where the light well kind of turns the corner.
So how many feet is?
It's not exactly dimensioned, we can ask the architect if you need that, but I kind of, I guess, wanted to point out a couple other things. The code limits 130% basement area to the first floor, and this is, it's a much smaller basement than the entire first floor, so I think in this situation, they're certainly not maxing it out. You know, if you look at kind of how that's oriented, it does square it off because there's a jog in the house, so it technically meets those requirements. And there's also the other requirement that at least 70% of the basement be under the house, so it doesn't have to be under overhangs or porches. You could actually have it extended into the backyard if you had a U-shaped house.
Right.
Right? So it meets that objective criteria. There's obviously still some discretion for you, but I kind of want to point out some of those items.
All right, all right. It would be glad that we have such a good staff. I do a second. I'll second.
Eric, second? If you move second, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Close?
No.
Motion is approved. If you disagree with our decision this evening, you can appeal to the city council through the city. Next item on our agenda is 33 Carlos Sequoia, request for a special structures permit to allow accessory structure up to the front yard setback.
With a basement?
No.
No basement. We're moving on to a different category. You might have sensed a theme in this meeting. So the applicant is requesting a special structure permit to allow accessory building located up to the front yard setback. The applicant is proposing to construct a new detached garage. The garage would be approximately 103, 103 feet from the front property line, approximately 13 feet behind the front line of the main residence. Now, as you're aware, the municipal code requires accessory buildings to be located 30 feet behind the front line of the main residence, or 120 feet from the front property line, or you can have it up to that front yard setback for flag lots with the special structure permit. The detached garage is proposed to accommodate four-car parking and is designed to line the garage up at the side access to the residence. The garage complies with all other applicable code requirements. The town arborist has inspected the site and determined that the garage will not interfere with any trees. Be happy to try to answer your questions.
Any questions, Lisa? Anyone? If none, we'll open the public hearing as the applicant here, or representative?
Hello, I'm Gary Head with Zach Architecture, and I think the staff made a pretty good case for us. The garage is setback, we're actually not even, the garage is not up to the front yard setback, we're even setback farther from the front yard setback. We're reducing the amount of impervious area by not further into the lot, so if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Anyone? Paul? Mary Beth? I have none. Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak on this issue? If not, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Any comments, please?
No comments from me at this time.
Mary Beth?
The code allows the, the structure according as a, as a flag lot. I can only feel that we need to approve.
I like the site, and it seemed like an appropriate conception, they've given a lot and the location of their recommendation.
Yes, either the site on Tuesday, I think it's appropriate. Is there a motion, then, please?
I'm with the planning commission approved the special structures permit to allow a district building to be located 133 property line at 33 Carlos Sequoia, subject to the conditions in the draft, special structures permit, subject to the basis of the findings and for the reasons incorporated in the staff reports.
Second? If you move to second, all in favor say aye. Aye. Approved. Opposed? The motion is approved. If you disagree with this, you can appeal to the city council by Tom Jackman, as the city clerk is intended. Thank you.
Thank you. Have fun.
The next item on our agenda is special structures permit, 98th floor plan. The next item on our agenda is special structures permit, ninety-eighth floor place. Request for a special structures permit to allow accessory structure up to the front yard setback.
Thank you, the site is approximately one point seven acres in size, and it is a flag lot. The applicant is proposing a new detached garage, which would be located approximately sixty feet, six inches from the front property line. So that would be six inches behind the line of the main residence. Um, you're aware, um, of the code requirements for a hundred and twenty feet, um, or your approval of a special structure permit. The architect has indicated that this garage placement would help preserve redwood trees on the site, and would provide direct access to the side entry of the main house. The arborist has visited the site and notes that the proposed garage should not interfere with any trees. Staff has not received any comments from neighbors on this proposal. So staff would recommend approval of the special structures permit as described in the staff report. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Any questions?
No, no questions.
Thank you. Any further questions, go open the public hearing. We'll replace the applicant here or representative?
Good evening, Jude Kerik, Pacific Peninsula Architecture. I'm here representing, uh, Pacific Peninsula Group. Uh, the staff report pretty much clearly, uh, states what we, the intent of the application was. Our main goal was to preserve, I think there's three redwoods directly behind the, uh, garage, and if we had to move the, the garage back the thirty feet, they would be compromised. Um, in conjunction with that, uh, the neighbor that's building currently on a cul-de-sac off of Atherton Avenue, their driveways are right adjacent to our driveway there. So it's kind of driveway on driveway, and it, it was kind of sense to have that, uh, garage in that location. So, uh, that's why we're applying for this special structures permit.
Any questions, the applicant, anyone? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Good, no further questions, no further comments from the audience. Close the public hearing, uh, bring it back to the commission. Again, uh, commissioners' comments, please. Anyone? All quiet.
Yeah, I, I had, I had more of a question around the area in front of the garage. Is that all cement, uh, asphalt or is that, was that, is that what I'm reading on the, the plan?
Well, there's gonna be backup and turnaround. To be quite honest, the landscape plan is still in development, so right now, we're just showing a paved area that's gonna allow, uh, maneuvering there. So in the end, it might be more landscaping than it currently shows on the plan.
Okay. All right, I was, I was, I was trying to make sure that the size of the garage and location wasn't an excuse to have more, uh, more concrete surface.
No, we're, we're, you know, drainage is always a cons- uh, consideration, and the more hardscape we have, the more problems with drainage. So there are detention systems in those areas, and we'll have to minimize the amount of hardscape due to that.
All right, thank you.
Any further comments, anyone in the audience? Close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. Commissioners' comments, anyone? Okay, um, being none, is there a motion then, please?
I move that the planning commission approve the special structures permit to allow accessory building to be located sixty feet, six inches from the property line at ninety-five floor place, subject to the conditions in the draft special structures permit certificate. And based on the findings for the reasons incorporated in the staff report.
I'll move. And Mary Beth, second? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Vote? Motion is carried, four and nothing. Good. To, to the arborist for this evening, to appeal to the city council through the city clerk for his candidate. Uh, the next item on our agenda is, um, lot line redesignation and special structures permit at Seventy Gresham Lane. Staff report, please.
Thank you. The site is a flag lot, it's, um, just over an acre in size. The first request is for a lot line redesignation, to designate the west side as the front property line. If the lot line redesignation were approved, um, the main building area would be wider and better oriented to the driveway. Additionally, the redesignation would make the shorter property line the front, um, making it more conforming with the current municipal code. Um, staff did review the configuration of the surrounding properties, um, and where their rear and side yards are located. And we would not anticipate any impact on those surrounding properties by, um, the lot line redesignation. And if the redesignation is approved, the second request this evening is for a special structures permit to allow two detached garages that would be constructed approximately twenty-three feet behind the front line of the main residence, where thirty feet would normally be required. This configuration allows the garages, um, to be symmetrical to each other and to line up with the circulation hallways of the home. Um, the town arborist did go to the site and concluded the construction of the south garage may impact two mitten trees, and recommended that an arborist be on site when those roots are pruned for the purposes of construction. And this has been included in the draft special structures permit that is before you tonight. Staff has been in communication with the neighbor on the south, who was concerned about the trees along that shared property line. She asked that they be well-maintained and irrigated through the course of construction. I think the applicant is prepared to speak on this issue tonight. Um, we've had, uh, several conversations back and forth with the neighbor. The neighbor does support the project and is happy that the applicant and property owner is willing to take the appropriate measures, um, to safeguard those trees. So staff would recommend approval of the lot line redesignation and the special structures permit as described in the staff report. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Questions from staff, anyone?
Yep, this one was a little confusing to me when I went out, when I went out there. I just wanted to make sure I understand which is the, is the designated front yard now? Is it, is it out here, is that where it is?
You have in your packets two kind of separate sets of plans. Um, you have a standalone sheet, which is showing the existing conditions, and that long side across the top is the front yard.
Yeah, okay.
And they're proposing the left side to be the front.
Okay, all right, all right, so, uh, that's, that's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure I double checked on you.
Okay, I've got a follow-up question on that. Do we have any idea how that happens? Because the ordinance says the short side of the flag lot should be the front. Is there any history on that at all?
Microphone at all?
Um, well, previously, but not, yeah.
Yeah, so we look at the microfilm records of the original building permit plans to try to establish, you know, what's the historical application of the property. We're not sure why it was chosen as the front. They may have wanted, obviously, a longer house. And if the other way, it would have been a, a shorter, wider house. So I guess it was to accommodate the, the design.
But there's nothing?
We didn't find any documentation that, you know, a variance or some, some other approval was granted. Yeah.
Kind of odd choice to do that.
Yeah.
I was confused by how odd it was, okay.
I, I guess my question would be, is it appropriate to restrict, um, building of, a basement under these garages? With the, with the possibility, you know, with the trees there and, I don't know how, how far the roots are gonna go.
There's not a request for a basement under these accessory structures.
In the future, there could be.
That would have to come before the planning commission for a basement under a detached accessory building. Yes, correct. And then, absolutely, that would be a good time to look at.
I want a question. No further questions, staff, we'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant here or representative?
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Steve Borlik with Young &amp; Borlik Architects, representing the owners of Seventy Gresham. They're also both here this evening, if you have any questions for them. Uh, we think the staff report identifies the, the main request in front of you, and we're also a little confused by that, uh, original orientation. But I, I, you know, I think there was a time in the town's history when you could choose, and you didn't have to, you didn't have to go through any process. You could just decide, hey, this is gonna be my front, and in, in that case, they were restricted to a smaller front setback. But it does create an odd configuration. So if that ho, if that property was vacant today, then we wouldn't need to be asking for the redesignation. It's just the, the fact that that house is there, we've gotta let you know we're changing it. Okay, so, um, I will, uh, address the tree and the neighbor issues by saying that we have had, um, uh, Jim McLennahan out to the property to take a look at the maintenance trees and the heritage redwoods, and, uh, have, had him put together a, a tree inventory. And he has recommended, and we will abide by having him come out and do a monthly inspection. So the, the, he recommends the twice-a-month irrigation, as well as a monthly inspection to keep an eye on the trees. And that's not, that's not a problem at all for, for us. Um, I also have in my possession this evening, a letter from the south property owner, as well as the north property owner, which I'll, which I'll hand over in support of our application. Uh, so if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to respond.
Any questions for the applicant, anyone? If you're outside of this property on Tuesday, uh, see what you're up against. Thank you for the letters. Any further questions of the applicant? Being none, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience like to comment on Seventy Gresham Lane? If not, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Comments, please? Most are quiet.
The only thing I have a question of more of staff of, uh, the, whether we need to include the, uh, irrigation inspection plan in our motion or not?
Excuse me, Eric, is this your?
Do, should we include the, the agreement on the irrigation, the tw- twice-a-month irrigation and once-a-month irrigation, uh, inspection in our motion or not?
Um, you can certainly modify condition four to include that if you wish, on the special structures permit certificate.
Okay.
And I'm also happy, as you know, that we have a full-time arborist on board now as opposed to a part-time arborist. And so I'm confident that we can make sure that, you know, we have some good oversight out there.
Anything I can do for job security?
Thank you. Did you want to modify condition four then, to require?
Yes, to include those conditions. And we did a motion, a single motion or a double motion on this?
Two motions.
Two motions, is it? Two motions.
So I think it's two motions.
Yes. Motion then, for lot line redesignation.
I move the planning commission approve the lot line redesignation as, uh, to designate the west property line as the front property line at Seventy Gresham Lane, subject to the conditions in the draft lot line rec- uh, redesignation certificate. And based on the findings and for the reasons incorporated in the amazing staff report.
And I'll second. You move the second on the lot line redesignation for Seventy Gresham Lane? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Vote? Motion is carried, four and nothing now. Motion, uh, for structure.
I can just read back to you the modification to condition four to make sure we have it correctly. Um, we're gonna add require monthly inspection by applicant's arborist and twice monthly irrigation to the satisfaction of the town arborist. So we have the oversight in there as well. Thank you.
Okay, your motion for, uh, special structures permit.
I, I move that, that planning commission approve the special structures permit for, what's it, um, Seventy Gresham Lane. For the two detached accessory buildings and the side yard located eighty-three feet from the front property line.
Seventy's in the condition.
Oh, subject to the conditions, one, two, four.
Special, yes, to dedicate.
Uh, they're moving, is there a second, please? I'll say that.
All right, well, yeah.
Removing Seventy on the special structures permit for Seventy Gresham Lane. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Vote?
I'm opposed, I'm voting.
Three to one. Motion is carried. Uh, the applicant disagrees with the decision this evening, then appeal to the city council by contacting the city clerk, Lynn Tendell. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is, um, uh, one forty-seven Gresham Lane, uh, special structures permit and area tree removal.
Thank you, the applicant is requesting a special structure permit to allow a basement to extend beyond the footprint of the first floor. A special structure permit to allow a pool to be located up to the front yard setback, and a heritage tree removal permit to allow the removal of one redwood tree. The applicant proposes to construct a new two-story residence with a partial basement. Portions of the basement are proposed to extend beyond the footprint of the first floor above, and those extensions total approximately two hundred and twenty-one square feet in area. The extensions will be under the front entry porch in a landscaped areas and will not be visible from the front of the residence. The applicant is also requesting a special structure permit to allow the pool to be located approximately seventy-three feet from the front property line. And as you're aware, the code requires pools to be located thirty feet behind the front line of the main residence, or a hundred and twenty feet from the front property line. At this property, the front yard setback is fifty feet, so the standard requirement for the pool would be eighty feet. And they're proposing to locate it at seventy-three feet, ten inches, so. Uh, so with the issuance of the special structure permit, um, the pool could be up to the fifty-foot front yard setback. And the proposal does meet the intent of the code and will not be detrimental to the neighborhood. And finally, the last item is the heritage tree removal permit request, and that's to remove the one redwood tree. This tree is in immediate conflict with the proposed, um, pool house, and the applicant notes that it would, if the pool house were to be relocated to save the tree, then the tree would also be in conflict with the pool, because of the decking and some of the root issues. Um, this tree is identified as having, um, secondary stem and being susceptible to failure. The tree is also noted as being abnormal in, um, size and irregular in appearance. Uh, the town arborist also visited the site in support of the removal request, and she can expand on that if you have any questions. Um, and I do need to clarify, um, in the report, I believe we indicated that the replacement tree would be twenty-four inch size, and it would actually be, um, thirty-six inch size. So we can make that correction in the certificate as well. And I think the applicant wants to maybe expand on, uh, the entirety of the planting that'll be occurring on the site, and we can have them do so. So I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Any questions? Being none, thank you. Uh, does the applicant, go over the public hearing, is the applicant here?
Good evening, uh, commissioners, my name is David Boxstedt, I'm with LCA Architects. And yes, I have come for three items today, so I just asked for, uh, grace here. Uh, one is the, we do have the basement coming out beyond the house, but it's for parking underneath. It is buried in the ground, so they'll be planting. The only ones who will see it is during construction, and then that will, that will be done. So I think I'm a little different than, than other people. On the plan, I show you the little sliver of the pool. My clients are big swimmers, twenty-five meter pool, it's just that one lane would have to be short. And so that's, I just, again, asked for grace there and, and, um, help there. And then we do have to take out that one heritage tree. Um, but we want to accommodate the edge around this property. We are demolishing an existing house there, but we wanna replace it with sixty-two new trees along the edge. Uh, we're gonna add, um, nine thirty-six inch box redwoods and six thirty-inch box copper beeches in the front, and then a variety of oaks and, um, flowering pears, et cetera. So that we, we ring this property, the front wall and everything else won't be changed, the back wall won't be changed, the big redwoods, uh, to the, to the, um, to the left side won't be changed. We just have to unfortunately take out that one tree, so, questions, comments? I'm sorry, I'm the last guy on the thing with the basement, but I, I, I think this is buried, and, and we purposely dropped it so the landscape would go underneath it. I could make the living room bigger, but I didn't think that was appropriate, so I wanted to.
Any questions from commissioners, anyone?
How far does this take out from the house?
Four feet. But that's, the yellow line's there, so it's buried underneath. I only made that, uh, seven feet, so the, you know, the hood of the car sits underneath there, so that you can backfill and landscape above that.
So on this map, it's designated the yellow?
Yeah, just the yellow, so you'd clearly see it.
And it's, triangle is, is cut off at the, at that, at the property line here, it's not squared off?
Right. This is one of the smaller lots, so it sort of, during that, but I think, uh, the, the owners love landscaping, and it's, you know, be well-maintained. It's a beautiful piece of property now, um, just they wanna replace the house?
Any further questions for the applicant? Being done, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else want to speak?
But, excuse me, I would like to, I live across the street from this property.
Pardon me?
Can you come up the street?
Will you come up, please?
Thank you, yeah. I live right across the street from this property and, um, I watched a two-hundred-year-old oak tree being butchered and taken down. I watched the front oak tree, which is also very old, being butchered, I mean whoever the tree people were, were horrible. And I don't know what they're going to do to this redwood, but is it really necessary to take all these heritage beautiful trees out of a property? I mean, and just butcher them? I, I, I've never seen, I told one of the people that was over there, I said, I wished you would have asked me for a good tree person because of this, these people were just horrible. So I can't think that anybody that loves landscaping, um, could have done that to these trees. And that is my only comment.
Uh, most times heritage trees act as a heritage tree removal permit and sometimes they're granted because of trees, look, they look very good, but they have a tremendous hole in the middle in there, there seem to be dead dying or, or dangerous, one, one or the other. They're taking it down for that reason. And it really, I know, I had this happen in our neighborhood, my own neighborhood, yesterday, same thing happened. And it is very disturbing to see that happen. Uh, any further questions of the applicant, anyone else want to speak on, on Patricia? If not, we close the public hearing, bring them back to the commission, comments please?
I guess my only comment would be that, um, we don't usually take down heritage trees because there is no way, uh, to do that. I understand this one may have some issues, but at the same time, um, it, it, you know, it hasn't had any, any documented failures. Um, so I, I wouldn't be in favor of, of taking down the, the tree.
Great, anyone else?
Um, yeah, regarding the oak that we just heard about, I was wondering, does the staff has anything on that, if the town arborist has anything on that oak?
I'm not familiar with that situation.
And then clarification again on the redwood that is to be removed, uh, and your review on that?
Um, their staff, their arborist's report stated, um, that it was a secondary stem growing from the trunk of the tree um, and this would make it dangerous at some point. I don't really feel that the tree is dead or dangerous, but because redwood trees have very shallow roots and they go laterally for pretty far, that any kind of construction near that tree will, could cause it to fail.
So you don't think that there's a problem with the tree right now?
It, when it has the, when it has a secondary trunk like that, it could be more prone to failing. Um, he noted that it has a poor form, I don't feel that is a reason for a tree removal. Um, so technically, this would not be a tree that I would approve. Um, and so, but I would recommend it because there's going to be construction nearby and, and, and the roots will need to be cut, so.
Okay. Any further comments, questions? Rebecca?
Okay, so that's, that's, that's interesting that we got a, that wasn't addressed earlier, uh, by the app, but and I, this, this basement's different, it doesn't, it, it, am I missing this, this basement's not underneath the, the, the structure of the house, it's not underneath, uh, anything that has any overhang, it's?
Correct, and that is not a, a code requirement at all.
Yeah, so what's the, so?
Hundred and thirty percent.
Hundred and thirty percent of the house?
And you, you see, it's, it's a portion, it's under a portion of the home, it's not the entire home and it accommodates the garage area.
It's not, it's not a situation where there is a very big, uh, basement that was just trying to extend it to two hundred and twenty-one feet.
Right, yeah, and if you look, you know, it's a small dashed area here and that small area there really.
Yeah, okay.
And it doesn't extend the full size of the residence. So if they were to, you know, it'd be kind of difficult, I guess, to jog it.
Yeah, I get it.
And, and that was where, you know, the, when the council and the planning commission was reviewing this, they were saying, well, easiest way to build a basement is one box without a lot, without a lot of little jogs.
Yeah, yeah.
And so that was kind of the, the thoughts behind that section of the ordinance.
Okay.
And then another question for the applicant, what was the parking issue with the garage again, did you clarify that?
Yeah, it's just turn around, just to be able to drive in and turn around and stuff. And, and again, this is buried, so there is landscape above that and, and that will, um, so no one will see that. So I think in the spirit of the law of trying to not have basements protrude or anything else, that was the, the comment there. Thank you.
I have a question to the applicant also.
Yes, sir.
What's the final result, if we say no on the redwood tree, what happens?
Um, I, I would say we would appeal it because, I mean, they're swimmers and, and the problem is with the tree. So he, here, here's my heart, the problem is with the tree, with the pool and cutting into it, my arborist says that there's chances of the roots digging into the pool, you know, pool leakage, anything else. And yeah, I, it, it's sad that you're doing that and so the compensation for that is, is adding these additional trees around the edge. And, um, I wasn't involved with the other point, I'm, I'm, you know, I've been on this project for only a couple of months. So we as a firm are very good at taking care of trees and taking care of trees on site. So we want to be con- uh, conscious of that and create a nice neighborhood, uh, area around that. So in the front, in the sides, everything else, so we'd be more than happy to meet with neighbors and, you know, add additional trees to, for their benefit. But that's the comment of trying to be a good neighbor and trying to make this a special project for these people.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any further questions? If not, is there a motion? We need to have a couple of questions here.
Take each item, yeah.
Yeah, just one other comment, um, I think I'm going to have to recu- recuse myself from voting on this particular issue because I didn't get a chance to get up to see this particular property. So it's hard for me to evaluate the placement of the tree, the condition of the tree and, and the effect that it has on the property.
Okay. Rebecca? We need a series of motions. For apple being special structures permit.
I move the planning commission approve the special structures permit for the basement under the main residence. Uh, and I'm going to skip over that, uh, to, uh, act one forty-seven, uh, official lane, subject to the conditions of the special structures permit certificates and heritage, uh, and based on the findings and for the reasons incorporated in the staff report.
Oh, sorry, I did one big motion, sorry.
I know, you know, I, I, I was trying, I was trying to edit it, I tried to see if I could do it out there.
I'm still believing outside of it.
All right, good.
Remove the second, uh, for a special structures permit of official lane, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
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 All abstained.
All abstained, three to one se- extension. The next mo- uh, motion should be for the, um,
It's the tree, huh?
Um.
The tree has to be removed if by any of the other, other, or the public.
Yeah. Uh, can you do that, you want to do again? You know, based on our arbor, uh, uh, arborist input, I'm concerned that, that.
Well, I guess I'm a little concerned about the history, this item came in pretty early on and, um, at the time Kevin Kilti provided, um, the arborist services and gave some advice that he was supportive of the removal.
Oh, okay, all right.
And, and then we had a change in staff and, you know, meeting dates and, and some difficulty.
All right, so that's.
And I think his concern was the shape of the, the size of the tree, the structure of it and the proximity to the pool.
Okay, all right, so that was our arborist at that time, okay.
At that time, but now that this item's before you, you know, we have a fresh new arborist and you can, you certainly need to take all that in.
This is kind of like giving two attorneys a room. All right, um, all right, I'll listen to others then.
Paul's going to abstain.
Yes.
Is Rebecca coming, the tree?
Well, I said I wasn't in favor of taking down the, the heritage tree. It's kind of.
Consistent on that.
Yeah.
What kind of, what?
I am consistent about it, I tend to remain consistent.
Well, you want to make a motion to deny the removal of the tree?
Okay, I, I, I move that we deny removal of the heritage tree and to one forty-seven, Patricia, correct.
I'll say. Say, deny the heritage tree removal permit one forty-seven, Patricia, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Please, that's what we're looking at now, okay, follow the game. First take this, thank you. And, uh, the last motion. That's it, I guess.
Well, can they protect the roots of the tree and still, I mean, we didn't really evaluate that because if they could protect the roots of the tree and still build the pool in some fashion. It might be something that they have to come back for, I guess, because we weren't able to really evaluate that.
Yeah, um. Yeah. Was the pool house located on the plans?
Yeah, and the pool house is, I mean, it's right.
Right, right where it's located, so I feel like if they're going to continue to locate. So I feel if they continue, if they're going to locate the pool house there, then there's no reason.
Well, the, yeah, the item I'm talking about is, let's say they moved the pool house and they wanted to keep the pool at the current location, I'm not sure, we weren't able to evaluate that, so I would say you may want to just continue it if that's what the applicant would like, or you can make a decision and that way they have the appeal abilities. So we may want to open this back up to the applicant.
Yes, the applicant has handled it.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, uh, you can do, uh, root barriers, we've done that in the past with pools, so it could be, uh, put in place and then we just have to, so how, how would you, if we relocated the pool house, would we have to come back? No, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a special.
Well, my concern is that we did not evaluate the, um, saving the tree and the pool and so I would like to have our arborist have the opportunity to do that, so I would recommend if you.
But could that just be done on a staff level, because the pool is?
No.
Okay.
So if we were to, the, the question I guess is, can you issue the special structure permit tonight upon the satisfaction of the town arborist that the tree can be preserved? And she hasn't had the opportunity to evaluate that and, and.
Or continue it.
Or you can continue it to have that evaluation and come back at your next meeting.
What would, what would the applicant say? Would you accept a continuance on that for another month?
Yeah, I mean, my, my clients want to move forward, so in the continuance, um, I could still move forward with the main house and then it's just the location of the pool maybe closer to the main house or, or, um, thing of relocation. So I would come back next month dealing with the pool and the pool house location.
Correct.
Yeah, and it, and it may be that if, yeah.
I'd still put in all those trees.
You need to pull them, if you need to move the pool, you may be closer to the front yard, so they'll need to evaluate that.
Okay, I'd accept that, so that if we could, we could still move forward with the, with the main project and make that work.
Which may make a slightly more of an exception on the pool overage because if they push it close to the house.
But it's going closer to the property line.
Right, but the, but the pool wherever it goes still is, um, in front of the front setback, so that's still within the ordinance.
That's correct, yeah.
But it's not outside, you're, you're allowable variance on that regard.
I move the continuance.
That's acceptable to the applicant.
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, you were, maybe you weren't ready for me.
And second I say, uh, that the, um, special structures permit be continued for one month, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All three of us, all three of you.
I'm all for that, I get a chance to pick one.
All right, that concludes, um.
Do you, do you want to hold this back?
Thank you.
These are achieved, good.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is, is, uh, tentative parcel map.
Do you have a sheet here?
Forty-nine Tuscaloosa.
Thank you.
Forty-nine Tuscaloosa. Applicant here?
Okay, sure, I'm fine with that. That's fine, if you want to go straight to the applicant, that doesn't matter. Couldn't get to the page quick enough. The applicant is requesting a subdivision to create two legal lots at forty-nine Tuscaloosa. Um, as you're aware, the minimum lot size is one acre, minimum width one seventy-five, minimum depth two hundred. Um, and each parcel more than complies with these requirements. Um, parcel one would be a little over one and a half acres, parcel two a little over an acre. And I guess I don't really have anything to add, it's a pretty straightforward request. Happy to answer any questions, the applicant's here as well.
I have a question. On the drawing, there was a figures called net and gross.
Yeah, so I think the gross takes into consideration Tuscaloosa Avenue and I don't consider that to be part of the lot area, so I focus on the net.
Don't they call that an atherton acre when they do that, that's what I'm told.
No, an atherton acre is forty thousand square feet.
Okay, any further questions to staff? Being done, we'll open the public hearing, is the applicant here?
Uh, yes and no, Jude Keerick, Pacific Peninsula Architecture, the applicant is actually Dan McLeod, who is our civil engineer surveyor. He ha- processed the application for us because this is more of a mapping issue. But, um, just to, once again, the net and gross, Tuscaloosa and a few other, uh, lot, or streets in town tend to have their property line out to the middle of the street. The city or the town requires us to dedicate that back, right away back to the city, so hence we get a gross and a net number on the lot area. But regardless, our net areas more than comply with the, the required minimums. The unusual thing about this property is that when we first looked at it, there was an indication that was potentially two, two lots. There was a remnant of an old lot line, or at least what we thought was an old lot line. And to further con- confuse us, there were two parcel numbers for this property as well. So we don't know the exact history of what went on here, but, uh, we think it's two lots and we're going through the process now to subdivide it into two official lots. So, um, the subdivision will have ni- negative, no impact on any of the trees. If you were out at the property, there are some beautiful historic large trees and the subdivision where the, the, the lot line is being created is actually going to put those, uh, heritage oaks in the setback areas and they'll be preserved for their entire life. So we think the subdivision makes sense and we ask your approval.
Yeah, I do appreciate the detailed work the, um, applicant did because when I first saw this, I said, come on, you got two parcels, what are we doing here? He says, no, well, when you go back and you look through all the subdivision records, he just couldn't find a record of how it was created appropriately. So he's going through the process and I do appreciate that because at first blush, it looked like two legal lots.
Any further questions for applicant? I visited the property on Tuesday, so I have a piece of property, it could be an annual.
Yeah, it's a nice property.
Okay, is there a motion please? It needs to be forwarded to the city council.
City council, that's currently.
I move the planning commission to recommend the city council approve the tentative parcel map certificate, the lot subdivision of the one lot into two lots at forty-nine Tuscaloosa, based on the findings and for the reasons incorporated in the staff report.
Recommend me.
Recommend to city council.
Yeah, recommend to city, to, to the council.
Move, is there a second?
No second.
All second, move the second, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion is carried. Again, if you disagree with our decision, you can appeal to the city council in ten days, by question.
What happens to the address in a situation like this, at forty-nine and a half or what?
No, we, we work to assign an address, um.
We, we assumed it would be forty-three, so that's why we had.
Yeah, and then we make sure, you know, fire and police and everybody's okay with it.
Time on our, next item on our agenda is the ordinance, um, consideration of an ordinance to amend the municipal code for the special events ordinance.
Um, the city manager took this item to the city council to get some direction and they requested the planning commission consider these ordinance amendments. The main point of the, the change here in the code is to really cover those, those events that take a lot of town resources that aren't currently covered under the ordinance, like a presidential visit, and that's our main example. So, you know, right now, if the president comes to lunch, there's significant amount of town resources devoted to that event as well as outside agencies and that is not cost recoverable. Um, there's other events that may be, you know, a very large party that, that gets a bit out of hand or requires some traffic control um, that we could then go in and, and get some cost recovery for that. So that's, that's kind of the main purpose of some of these, is those events that spill over from just the private property and, and requires some additional town assistance. Um, so, I don't know, I'd be happy to try to answer any of your questions.
Well, this event ordinance has been around for a long time.
Correct.
And we tried to do something with hours, which I see her in here again, at eight o'clock. And we tried to do something with sunset about ten years ago. Unfortunately, William isn't here, he went to Comodore when we did it.
Correct.
Uh, and it's, we haven't done it, I thought, it's still there at eight o'clock. Now, are we gonna put sunset in here and leave it at eight o'clock?
You can certainly make whatever recommendation you would like to city council.
Yeah, but there are pretty special issues about that. The technical requirement, like, schools and lights.
Right.
We just wanna send it forward, but, but there, there's a timeline in there.
It's up to the, yeah, whatever the commission would like to do on that.
I have a lot of, I have, I have some comments, that, if, if we're gonna review it and put our stamp on it, and I, I would like to have some, some changes.
What, sure.
Okay. A, um, a permit to nature being required whenever the, there's going to be parking on both sides of the streets and, and end up, um, restricting like emergency vehicles getting through it. A lot of our streets are quite narrow, and if they're, and if, if we're having a big party and parking on both sides of the street, I, I would say that, that we could end up with a dangerous situation. And, and I'd like to see that, that you know, that, that has to, should be regulated, as well as parking on cul-de-sacs, like, uh, for instance, Surrey Lane is is a good one, um, there's no parking signs, but if those people on Surrey Lane have a, a party, they're, they're, they do park up all in there, and for some reason, when they have a party, it's not being dangerous, however, if the school parents park there, it becomes a dangerous situation. And, and I don't think we can have it both ways. It's either dangerous or it's not, and if somehow we have to have to prevent or regulate dangerous parking. On, on this, on, there's a section as, I don't know what, the, I see. Seventeen fifty-six forty B. It says that there's a, um, a special event permit required for any special event held on private property occurring over the course of two or more consecutive days where members of the public are invited. I mean, that's pretty loosey-goosey to me. I mean, you could say a family reunion was a you know, um, would be, would need to have a special event per- permit, and I don't think I'd be in favor of that. However, you know, ma- maybe we could regulate it with a quantity of people that were invited, you know, if you're gonna have more than fifty, not many families are bigger than fifty anymore. I don't know. I don't think we need to regulate everything, but it would seem that, that this would do that. I don't know if you guys read it that way, um.
Well, the thing I bring up is, uh, so I live near, near a church, right outside of the city limits.
Uh-huh.
And, at, at, at Christmas and Easter, I've seen it as a parking lot. So, is that a special event or not? I mean, we've gotten used to it, but, but it, but it's, so, you know, there's, you know.
But they're not in our town.
I know that, but, but, but the code could be attributed to, to the usage of the street.
Yeah.
But I, Sam, I have, I have a problem with this.
I just, I just don't think that, yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm not sure that we flush this whole thing out.
Well, I guess to your question about the reunion, um, it's two or more days when members of the public are invited.
Right.
It's kind of the key there, so I don't think you're inviting members of the public to the reunion, and I'm a little.
But according to who, I mean, you know, you know, the neighbor's perspective might not be the same as you know, you get extended family invited, and the neighbor whose yard is being parked on
Mm-hmm.
might be annoyed. Uh, you know, I, I.
Yeah, I don't, I, I, I don't think that we're getting that many complaints on those types of events, the, the one offs here and there, um.
It's got the, it's the Obama event.
Yeah, it's really.
Yeah, I was just, I'm just suggesting that we have something subjective, rather than, to, to.
Well, because you could have a, well, you could have a wedding with five hundred people and it not require an event, and as long as they take care of the traffic well, it wouldn't even trigger a retroactive permit situation.
Right.
It's when it kind of spills over and becomes a problem, and then that's the, you know, determination of the police chief and the city manager that they would require the permit.
Well, it might be all this started because they're trying to recruit some money.
Correct.
And there's no offense, but in the meantime, the general special events ordinance is, is filed anyway. There's a lot of things wrong there. And, and, and just to take care of. And the rest of the ordinance is the best way it is right now, basically. So, when we start.
Well, I have a lot of concern about it, um, in favor of the, of what the city manager wants to do, because I feel that it's inappropriate for the town in any way to grant a favor to a political party that isn't granted to absolutely everybody. If, if somebody's gonna have to pay for the police, the direct traffic at their party, then everybody has to, and if we make an exception, say, for political fundraising, then, then what party is the town supporting, or, you know, and that's totally inappropriate.
And this doesn't have to be your only shot at this ordinance, I mean, you could recommend the city council adopt it to, to cover that one issue that the city manager's trying to cover, and then you can also inform the city council that you have some other concerns that you would like to continue to study, and that you'll be back to them with another recommendation.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so it's really up to the planning commission, or you can continue it and we can keep studying it.
Well, this is a big one, because we can go, we spent a lot of time on this before, a lot of time, I said it was permitted about ten years ago.
Right. Yes.
And we got a lot of people involved, the hours.
We interviewed the schools, we interviewed a lot of people, yeah.
Oh, yeah, the, the whole thing.
Yeah.
I've still got that great, big volume.
Oh, good.
Unfortunately.
Twitching.
And that was before, uh, Menlo's, Menlo Cup, uh, Menlo Master got lights. So, the hours now, they're already at eight o'clock, or, or dusk, or something else, there until, if they want to turn the lights off.
Yeah.
And it's a private, public school, so they can do
Right.
pretty much what they wanna do. So, uh, if you wanted to approve the ordinance as the city manager recommended, just say, here's, here's, we'll recommend this to you, but we'd like to, uh, come back and study this at a later time.
Reserve right to. Castle.
Maybe that's the way to do it.
I would agree with something like that.
There's a, there is a lot wrong with this, I don't know what you're talking about. So, our audience, is there any comment from the audience? I'll say it.
I, I'm opposed to this, so, I, I, you know, and, you know, the, the trigger on this was a long trigger for me, um, so anyhow, the president wants to tell me, I don't know, I don't care which president it is, uh, but, uh, so, I just felt like the, the basis for the, the action was inappropriate, and I'm not interested in, in approving. So, uh, I, I get the issue, but, you know, I, 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 there's, was the place where the wake was, uh, uh, where all the horses are, uh, was the, was the event center out, uh?
Hold on.
Uh, Circus Club?
Yeah, Circus Club, that, that to me, you know, that's, that has an event regularly, and the cars are only ever down the street, I, there's, so, and there's, there's the church down the street, and there's the kids who decide to do something at a fundraiser, and there's, there's a wedding, and there's a, you know, so, I, you know, for me, if, if, I'm not, one, I don't like the trigger in this, two, I, 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 I think you're right in your assessment that we need to do it comprehensively, and I'm not interested in doing it half-baked, and I, I just, I'm vague.
Okay, comments, go on.
No, I pretty much agree with Eric, I think we have to be very careful. If we're to do anything, I think it would just be the, the one item, but, um, I'm in favor of just continuing it for, for study.
I'm good with that, you know, I'm not in favor of it as it is.
But if we start to modify, we're gonna be here a long time doing it.
We're not doing it tonight, are we?
Well.
That resolves it quicker.
I think the point is it may take several meetings.
So, what's, what's the consensus here, what are they gonna do? Continue it?
Well, that's why I need, I, I've, being the new kid on the block, I need to study this a lot more, to really have a, a real grasp of it and to be able to vote effectively on it.
Okay, ladies, what would you suggest? Lucy, what do you think? Okay, will we go first? Yeah, well, see, now, the, the, the.
It, it, no matter what it is. They can recommend it?
Where's the front end?
Is there?
I don't, I don't.
I think it's a good cap.
Okay, I could say this in the record, just trying to figure out, uh, options for the approach.
Yeah, but if you don't recommend it, I mean, the council can go ahead and take their own action, it's a recommendation.
Okay, so the recommendation is to continue it for further study, and then we can just report that to them.
So if the council, and if the council feels. Yeah, and if the council, but, yeah, it, it, it's a recommendation to the council, so, at the end of the day, if they feel like it's urgent, if they're swayed by the city manager.
Okay. Fair enough.
Let them take it back.
They can just act on it.
Then they can act on it right there.
Right.
So, I mean, it's sort of.
Good shot.
Yeah. I just wanna clarify, I mean, or they can say the planning commission denies.
Our, our, our action here, by the way, continue it, if they want it back, come get it.
Yeah. Yeah.
How's that?
Well, we'll just, I'm just gonna continue for further study.
Yeah, but, I mean, a recommendation will come from staff and, and report back on the action that was taken by the commission.
Yes.
So does it come back, back to us next month then, or?
If they send it back.
Just continue.
If, yeah, yeah.
If they agree to continue it.
It's, well, they, well, they, the city council sent it here. The problem is that they own it, it's theirs.
Right. So they, they gave it the chance to modify it.
So, they, they gave you a chance, because they wanted to hear your thoughts on it. And I, my understanding is what you're saying to them is, well, we can't really do that, it's a bigger issue, we'd like to think about it longer.
Right.
They, at the time, can, on their own, can just say, thank you for your advice, but we really need to act on this.
Thank you for your advice.
So that's what they can do, or they could say, we agree, this isn't gonna blow up anytime soon, let's take a month or two, give it back to planning commission, and that will be.
I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Good explanation.
So, do, read the motion.
Yes, please. To continue, yes.
I'll make the motion to continue the special events ordinance until the next further reading. Your second.
Thanks.
Second, all the favors?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That's carried.
And then if you have individual comments that you did not give this evening, if you wanted to, you know, those directly to me, so I can put together a more comprehensive memo.
I'll send you the binder.
Any usual comments on?
On the ordinance, like, if there's something, I heard some comments from, um, Commissioner Winburne, but I don't know that I heard other commissioners concerned, too, all of mine. So you can just go ahead and send those to me, so that we can be a little more prepared for that conversation.
Well, the hours will be there someplace, because we get back into that again.
Right.
That goes on and on and on and on.
Well, I think, with the hours, when you look at that, you're also looking at how that affects the lighting issue as well.
It does.
Yeah.
And, well, it, it really all started with, with, uh, my partner, when he, at, at Menlo Master, and it got to be. Okay, um, that concludes our agenda items, except for.
Commissioner reports?
Uh, com- commissioner reports, if all you wanted to make some comments.
Well, no, it's just a general comment that, uh, that I addressed a little bit earlier, it's just the fact that, um, and I've talked to Phil off the record about this, just making my comments, not getting any discussion into it, just letting him know how I feel. And, uh, getting familiar with the process here after a year and a half, I, uh, as I expressed earlier, have an, an issue with some of the items that come before us, for the, um, special structures permit like they were tonight, where you have these architect, architects coming to us with essentially a blank slate, especially if there are no geographical limitations on the lot, um, wanting, uh, allowances, and I just, I have a tough time philosophically with that. That here you have, you can do anything with this acre and a half, or acre, or even two acres, and yet you want an allowance for four feet, thirty, five feet, two hundred feet. And, you know, I don't know if this is the right place to bring it up, or if it opens up to a discussion, but it's just the way I feel, I have a tough time approving some of that stuff, because I don't think that we're getting a fair effort on the part of, uh, some of the parties who are coming to us. And, and, uh, just throwing it out there for the way I feel. And maybe, maybe it's my, uh, naivety or something like that, because I don't know architecture, I don't know site plan, but I, I would look at a, at a, as a resident, I would look at a blank lot and say, okay, well, we can do this, we can do this, let's figure something out. And the number of these that are coming to us is, to me, striking, so.
Well, I, you know, sure, tonight, but, um, you know, there are a lot of good reasons to have basements with, with regard to heating and cooling and, and.
Oh, yeah, I get it.
And, and you gotta have some light in there, so I, I, I can understand that, that this cutout.
It's not just the basement issue, I mean, there were a lot of different issues that occurred before us in the previous months, that didn't have to do with basements.
Well, there's the flat lot, and the flat lots have the right to, to, you know, to have, they have some, some special privileges because they're a flat lot, um.
And maybe that's right, and maybe it's wrong.
But, but that's the way our code is written.
Correct, right.
Yeah, now, you know.
I think it's the pushing the envelope thing that's going on, I mean, these aren't, these aren't fourteen hundred fifty square foot houses that they're trying to get a basement, that's another thousand square feet. These are seven thousand, nine thousand square feet, feet places that say, oh, shoot, I need another three hundred feet, so, I mean, that, that's.
I don't think they're saying that they need three hundred feet, they, they're saying that lo- you know, that they're squaring off, for, for light reasons is one thing.
Yeah, yeah, well, some of. Yeah, I, I just think.
It's just a little bit more, it's just a, it seems to me it's just a little bit bigger, 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 all the way around. The, the basement issue goes way back, because, uh, originally we had it just underneath the main street.
I think we're getting a little beyond.
Right.
What's it, it's agendized. So, what we would like to offer is if you wanna have a conversation about this, we can easily agendize it, or you can have it one-on-one with staff,
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
whichever you feel is more appropriate, both would be fine, and maybe it's a good time for that.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I think we oughta look at the basement issue itself, uh, a hundred and thirty square feet, um, those things.
Right, right.
Thirty, thirty percent.
A hundred and thirty percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and those things were added, uh, way back as a result, and funny things had happened.
Mm-hmm, so review the basement regulations at a future meeting?
And decide if you wanna bring that to the council's attention, I mean, all those things are appropriate functions.
Yeah, because we could be looking at anything from adjusting that percentage, or adjusting the percentage based on.
The main residences.
Right. Mm-hmm.
Well, I think we also are, we visit the special structured permit, why, why do we have that? You know, what, it's, it's kind of, for the most part, it's some rubber stamp.
So, yeah, we could agendize a conversation.
Yes.
About things that you're, trends that you're seeing, things that you think might be problematic, and identify things that you wanna study, recommend to council, any of those actions, so, I mean, it's basically just saying, this conversation that's having now, letting the public know it's gonna happen, maybe they see something that's happening and could participate.
And my experience of that is that it's like an adjourn to a study session, adjourned at the same time, so we have, I think we have fewer items have a, have a piggyback on a study session that we adjourn to, and then that gives us to have a lot more free flow discussion about it, and it's have back and forth.
You could do it in a meeting, you know, but it.
It's, a study session's still a public meeting, but it feels more informal.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
But, and people observe, but we're not required in a study session to have public comment, things like that, it's allow, allows us to do the homework.
We will, we would, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it, it's pretty much, I mean, so it.
Not, not during the session, before the session, before the study session, but not during the deliberation.
Yeah, but the public is still there and a part of the process, and has all the opportunity to comment, the agenda, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, right, right.
You know, there are times when, right now, it almost feels like a study session, you know, in, in terms of this participating, so.
Right. Right. Right.
And, and depending on what you, what you want, I mean, I know, you know, your perspective is the concern of seeing everybody kind of maxing things out, it may also be nice to have even a workshop, or a, a different setting where you're, meet with the architects.
Right.
You know, when, when I, when we did the code revision in two thousand nine, I reviewed it with a few architects to say, well, this is what we think, but can, does this work for you? And to kind of understand, what are the trends they're seeing, you know, if we were to limit it to this, is that gonna work with them? And that way, I think, you know, there would be more support for it moving forward as well, if we were to pull in some of the items, be reasonable, but pull it in a bit. Um, that might be helpful.
Okay.
So whatever you'd like to do.
Well.
Happy to coordinate.
Happy to coordinate.
Let's put, let's put together as a study item.
Okay.
And find, we'll find time when we don't have nine items or ten items left.
Yeah, I'll work with the chair to, when is an appropriate agenda at the time.
We must be seeing some kind of activity for a couple of weeks already.
Yeah, I think we have four or five items, and this was a little tricky, because kind of a long time between the very early December and now, so there was a few extras in there.
Now, is there any status on menlo school, or menlo colleges?
They're still working on their plans in the noise ordinance regulations, and nothing to do.
Noise, noise, they're gonna get less.
No, I mean, on, on their noise standards, on how they can mitigate the noise, yeah.
Why they go up.
Yeah.
Okay, any further comment?
Um, just as far as commissioner reports are, um, regarding the civic center advisory committee, uh, we're in the process of selecting an architect, kind of be down to the final stages of that, we have a meeting on, uh, Monday, where I think we'll be in our final discussion field on that.
Right.
And we're down to the final two qualifiers, and, uh, we have a meeting, joint meeting with, uh, council, uh, Tuesday, or Monday. Yes, this week has been brutal. Where we re-interviewed the two finals with council members, so, moving forward on that, and, uh, we're really, really happy with the two firms that we have whittled it down to.
There's a one.
Well, there are, yeah. So, I have to be going out to Portobello Valley this weekend, uh, just on a drive, and I went back and buy their, uh, their town center, it's in all there.
Yeah, it's not nice.
Yeah, it fits the community very well, but I wouldn't get here.
Right.
But, but one of the, one of the architects that was part of the original group was, was one of those that designed that, I know. I don't know who it, we need to cut now this time, well, there were several people that claimed. Oh, right. That I didn't know about.
Yeah, there were several people that, I, I did that.
Yeah, okay.
Anyway, we're getting close, uh, Monday, next week, we should, uh, put the recommendation and forward that to the council. But that is the one we want, we'll see what happens.
And then, and then all we do is add cash and stir, it's like.
That's it.
Add a lot of money.
Three D and three fifty.
Okay, is there a move, a motion to adjourn?
And a second.
And a second, I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Move adjourn?